All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our November 25 meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. All members are present. We have just adjourned an executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property at 333 Inover Street in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 6. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, once again, thank you all for joining us. This evening, we'll start off with transmitting of Treasury warrants. We have Treasury Warrants 2520, 2520W, 2520T, 25M10S, 2521, 2521W, 2521T, 2521S. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept all.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is all those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. And for the record, the total on that, Mr. Manager, is?
Eight million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-six cents.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the approval of minutes from our meeting of November 12, 2024. Would anyone like to offer a motion?
So moves.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Which brings us to our first appointment this evening, which is with our principal assessor who's with us. Please come forward, Karen. Karen Rassus is our principal assessor. This will be a public hearing after we welcome Karen. We'll open the public hearing for the discussion of the local property tax policy with reference to classification. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank Karen.
Thank you for being here. Would anybody like to offer a motion to open this public hearing? Thank you, Mr. DePalma.
Second.
Second, seconded by Mrs. Micali. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote to open the public hearing. All those in favor? It is unanimous, and the public hearing is now open. So once again, Karen, thank you for being here. This is the annual visit that you pay us every year. I know you'll have, usually have a great presentation prepared for us up on the screen. And I, once again, thank you for being here, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Board, the Select Board, Honorable Select Board. If you would allow me, I would like to read you the cover letter that was in your packet, and then I can go through the slides to explain the classification and the options before us this evening. We're here this evening in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, to present information to the Select Board so that they may determine the percentages of the tax levy to be paid by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year '25. The Select, the Select Board must vote on a residential factor, which will determine the percentages of the tax levy to be allocated and paid by the residential property owners. The upcoming December 7th town meeting will not affect the residential factor vote; however, the presented tax rates are our best estimate at this time. After careful analysis and review, the Board of Assessors' recommendation to the Select Board is a classification shift of 175%, which would result in a minimum residential factor of .748433 for fiscal year '25. This shift conforms to the guidelines of Prop. 2 and 1/2 and is consistent with prior year's tax policies by the Board. Adoption of this recommendation allows the town to assess and collect an equitable amount of taxes from residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property sectors. This year is not a certification year; however, assessments were updated to meet the Commissioner of Revenue's standards and have been received and approved by the Department of Revenue. The proposed assessed values were established by analyzing calendar year 2023 sales and income data as of the January 1, 2024 assessment date. Our analysis resulted in the average single-family residential property value increasing by approximately 2.8%, while the average commercial-industrial value increased by approximately 9.43%. These are average tax calculations, and they're offered only as a guideline. Individual assessed values may have increased more or less than the imputed average. Traditionally, the Board of Selectmen have shifted the maximum allowable to the commercial-industrial-personal class, and that's the recommendation of the Board of Assessors this evening. The Board of Assessors continues in its mission to provide the most fair and uniform assessments in tax policies to the taxpayers of Wilmington and respectfully submits this recommendation to the Board this evening. So the first slide that we have is just to show you what's been going on with property values. So we're comparing fiscal year '24 to the '25, and this is showing what's the percent change by class. So in the cover letter that I just read, I said that the average single-family residential value went up by 2.8%, and this chart shows 3.28. That's because the residential class also includes all apartments, condos, vacant land, et cetera. It's the entire class. We did have an increase in the residential category, but there was some new apartment buildings, so that will skew that. It's just a percent change, but not the average increase to the average single-family property. Same here with commercial. Our average commercial, the difference just went up by 1.65% in the class, whereas industrial increased by 10.27, and personal property by 11.6. The 10.27 is not saying that all commercial-industrial properties have gone up by that amount. Again, this is an average. And with averages, what's happened this year in the industrial class is our TIF agreement with Analog had expired. We met our obligation last year. So the additional value from going from a TIF agreement to fair market value was increased in the industrial class this year. That alone accounted for 30, 30, 43, I'm sorry, $43 million of new value. So it's really kind of skews an average. And we also had, as you can see throughout town, some substantial industrial warehouse buildings that have gone up, and a good portion of that value is added this year to the industrial class. So it's a little bit skewed. They didn't all go up by the 10.27, but the entire class value did change by that amount. Personal property is the same situation with the 11.66% increase in value. That is the difference. It's not an average. And it actually, there were three larger commercial businesses that accounted for $20 million of that $29 million difference in value between the class from last year to this year. The other thing that's interesting to note is this is our first year of going over the $7 billion mark for our total real and personal property value in the town. Last year, we were at 6.9, but this year, with values increasing and growth happening in town, it's now at the 7.2. The pie chart down below is just showing you that the aver, that the residential class still remains the majority of the class in town at 74.88%. Our personal property class has grown, so it is now 3.9% of the total value in town, whereas commercial is only 3.1. And industrial, it comes in at the 18.03% of the total value in town. The next page in your packet shows the results of the shift that you would vote this evening. So our, this shows that with our new proposed fiscal '25 assessed values, the residential class makes up 74.8827% of the levy. But if you shift to the 175%, they would end up only paying 56.0447% of the levy. The commercial-industrial class currently before the shift would, it makes up 25.1173% of the levy. If you shift the 175%, then they would end up paying 43.9553%. I put last year's shift at the bottom so you could have it as a comparison. Was 175% shift, the residential class paid 57.887%, and the commercial-industrial-personal class paid 4.42.113%. If we go to the next screen, this shows the results and the impact of your vote on the average single-family tax bill, depending upon what factor you select. So we start with the, you can select in any increment of 1% from 1 to 175. So we've taken some samples here. If we shifted nothing, the average tax, or the tax rate would be $15.30, and that would result in an increase of $2,938 to the average single-family residential bill, where the average commercial would decrease by $28,428. If you shifted 150%, the average residential bill would go up by $1,132, and the average commercial would decrease by $3,300. If you voted 160%, the average residential bill would increase $773, and the average commercial would also increase $1,672. If you voted the 170, the residential value would increase by, residential tax bill would increase by $415, whereas the commercial would increase by $6,688. Traditionally, what you have voted is the 175% shift. This year, that residential factor would be 7.748433, and that would result in a tax rate of $11.45 for residential class, $26.77 for the commercial-industrial-personal property class. The average residential bill would go up by $232.36, and the average commercial-industrial would go up by $9,180.78. Down below, you can, whoops. Down below, you can see the average bill last year, the average assessed value, and the average bill was 78.15. And this year's average single-family value is $702,889. And the average commercial last year assessed value was $2,996,000. And the average commercial-industrial value this year is $3.2 million. Again, those averages are being skewed a little bit because of some very large new values in that class. It doesn't mean that everyone's value has gone up by that amount. Our sales that were analyzed were, again, calendar year 2023 sales, based on an assessment date of January 1, 2024. I think, as you've all seen, residential values are still strong. Most of our new construction is anywhere from 1.2 to 1.45 million dollars. We have our subdivisions around town where you can see that activity going on. Our condos, you all have seen, I'm sure, 168 Lowell Street. Those started out around 650 to 680. Our last sales that were there were 704 and 730. So our commercials, number of sales were still strong, but down this year. The number of sales, I think interest rates have greatly impacted that activity, and we didn't have as, as many. The one thing I want to say about the average single-family bill is we always compare us in comparison to all of Middlesex and Essex County, figuring if someone was looking to relocate to this area, the general vicinity of Middlesex Essex covers 89 communities. And based on our fiscal year '24 average bill, we ranked number 33 from the bottom, with Lawrence being the lowest and Weston being the highest. So we've stayed in that range from, we've bounced between 31 and 33 for ranking for the last six years. So I know everyone's taxes are going up, but we're kind of staying in line with our neighboring communities as well. Here, you can see on the next screen the activity of our average single-family bill. We gave over 20-year analysis to show what's happened with values over the years. You can see in '23, we had a 14% increase. '24, we had a 10% increase in value. We do, we interpret what happens in the market. We don't predict. This year, our increase is 2.8% for the average single-family value increase. The only, let's see. And, and some people always ask, do the values ever go down? And as you can see by the single, the average single-family assessed value here, you can see back in 2009, '10, the assessments did, did drop, and they followed the market, and we've kind of been on an uphill climb since then. This graph kind of gives a better visual to show what's happened in the market. You can see how it peaked. It went down, kind of plateaued, and then how it's been increasing. And again, the assessor's job is to interpret what happened, not to predict what we think is going to happen. This screen will show you our history of what the Board has done as far as shifting and what the residential and commercial percentage shares have been as a result of that. So for fiscal year 2025, the, if we did not shift, the average, the value of the residential class is 74.8827%, and the commercial-industrial class makes up 25.1173%. If we do shift, the residential percentage share of the tax levy will then become 56.0447%, and the commercial-industrial share would be 43.9553%. As you notice, that is a decrease in the residential from last year by 1.84%. The last time that we had this low of a residential percentage share was back in 2014. And again, that's because of such an increase in the personal and industrial value added to the class this year. Some other pieces to take into consideration is the residential exemption, which has not been adopted by the town. There's only 18 communities in the Mass., in Commonwealth of Mass. that have adopted it, and it's primarily for those communities where there's a large presence of second homes to give the year-round person a little bit of a break. They have to be owner-occupied, and it has to be their primary residence. Same, I think Somerville is also one of the communities, because they have so many multifamilies, that they give a discount for someone who is year-round. We're more of a bedroom community and don't have that type of a setting here. The small commercial exemption has not been adopted by the town. There's only 14 communities in the Commonwealth that have adopted it. The criteria is that you have to have an assessed value less than $1 million. You have to have less than 10 employees, as certified by the Director of the Department of Unemployment Assistance at the Commonwealth. And the, any decrease in, in value, any exemption to small businesses under the $1 million that met that criteria, gets absorbed by the rest of the commercial-industrial and all of the industrial class, and it pushes the tax rate up for the entire class. The last one is an open space discount. It's not adopted by the town because we don't have any open space that is considered open space. We have a few properties that are under Chapter 61A in town, but we don't have any, anyone who has a agricultural restriction or anything on property, so we do not have any open space. The Board of Assessors would just like to inform the Select Board that the fiscal year '25 excess levy capacity this year is $1,324,715, which is slightly less than last year's $1.38 million. This, so the Wilmington Select Board shall vote a residential tax factor in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, which will determine the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property. If the Board votes the residential factor that has been laid out in the example tonight of .748433, resulting in a shift of 175%, this would be the most favorable scenario for the residential taxpayer and has been the traditional vote. This is also the recommendation by the Board of Assessors this evening. The resulting tax rates discussed are estimates pending the special town meeting on December 7, and the certification of the Department of Revenue of our tax rate once we submit that. So with that, any questions? And Chair, Mr. Chairman, if you take over from here with a vote.
Well, thank you very much. Certainly, that's a lot to digest here this evening. And, you know, having had the benefit of seeing this presentation a few years now, it certainly makes a lot more sense. But, so what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, I'd like to open it up for questions or comments from the Board. Then, as you know, this is a public hearing, so if anybody from the audience would like to be heard on this particular issue, we'll open it up there, and then we'll close the hearing and then take a vote. Okay? If that's okay?
Thank you.
So I'll start with my colleagues. Anybody have a question or a comment? Mr. West.
Well, I'd just like to thank you, Karen, for the presentation. Again, we don't like to see taxes go up. Nobody does. But from looking at the 2024 average tax bill of $387, down to a 2025 average tax bill of an increase of $232, I mean, that's a basically a $140 decrease in, not decrease in taxes, but decrease in...
The average.
On the average of what a tax bill could be compared to last year. So I think that's, that's great news for the town overall. So I'd like to thank you for that. So, and it's nice to see that, like you said, that you've got several companies now that are heavily participating in personal property, so that's good. And, and the fact that the Analog TIF is done, so that, that adds to our tax levy to help us out as well.
Yes, it does.
So I think that's great news. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Kyra.
Karen, thank you for the presentation, as always. It's great, and as always, I, the recommendation is a solid one. But just curiosity gets me a bit. Have you gotten any, and I know this is the first time you're making the presentation.
Yes.
Any businesses saying, boy, you're going up and up and up? Have you had any pushback from it?
So I guess what I can compare is to last year. And I always use as a gauge, like, the number of abatement applications that we receive and the type of conversation that I have with some of the commercial representatives for those properties. And I think at the end of the day, all businesses are in business to make money, and no one likes taxes, but they know that the values are solid, that Wilmington's very desirable. And my, you know, my conversation with them is on value, not on tax, and that our tax rate being under the $30 per thousand that it had been, I think puts us in a better position. There's been some very large sale prices lately of properties. And those, I've had one phone call from one of those people with the, with the price. I mean, we all know we had a $90 million, which I think is our biggest sale that we've had so far on an industrial property. And they, you know, were questioning the, the assessment, which is not at 100% value yet because it wasn't 100% complete as of the assessment date. And I said, well, there was some type of analysis done to determine the 90 million. From an assessment point of view, because I don't want people thinking that it's going to be assessed at 90 million. They, when they do an analysis, like a discounted cash flow, they're projecting out multiple years and what they think they're going to be able to get for rent. Like, what's the future value of this dollar? We're willing to pay this today. But the assessed values are based on fee simple market rates today. What's rent, what's the rents today? What's the vacancy today? Expenses, cap rates on commercial properties? And that might be different from what their analysis is. So I think we're competitive with our abutting communities, and that's why they continue to choose Wilmington. We have the space to build new, and a lot of people like new. They just might not be getting the top-end rents that they're looking for. I know everyone's had questions about certain things being vacant. I think they're being selective with their tenants and might need to adjust rent a little bit. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Kyra. Mr. DePalma.
Karen, thank you very much. Thank you for making this understandable. I appreciate that we've been able to keep the increase low, especially where it looks like we may have a new school going online, so we're going to be assessing for that also. I just want to thank you very much for the work that you and your staff do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for this recommendation. Obviously, there's a lot that goes into this, and this isn't, I guess I'll dare to say, this isn't something that the Board gets excited about doing. I'll dare to say, I guess I almost speak for myself. But, you know, basically, based on the law, as you cited, Chapter 40, Section 56, we have a choice here, in some, to shift the tax burden to the residents by 74.8% or by 56%. Those are our two options. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
And so, it's really a no-brainer.
Well, you have an option anywhere in between there two, but...
Yep. And given you can see, as you mentioned in your presentation, this, what I anticipate will be the vote will be the 20-something time in a row that we've done that, probably to the displeasure of many of the businesses in town. But I want to be clear, we are shifting the maximum burden away from the taxpayer resident and onto the businesses. That's what we're being asked to do. I can't tell you how many times people have asked me about this, and I've pointed to this very video online annually because I think it's a good explanation, right? And we're not up here to say, you know what we should do? We should raise people's taxes. That's not what we're being asked to do tonight. So I just want to make that clear. This is not new to you. I'm just trying to make it clear, because it is. If you're not looking at this document, you haven't seen this presentation, you haven't talked to someone like yourself, and it just seems like your taxes continue to go up, which is the case for us as well, as residents. But these are our two choices. We shift it onto the residents, or we shift it onto the businesses. So that's what we'll be taking up in a vote in a moment. Until then, would any resident like to be heard on this particular issue? This is a public hearing. Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments on the Board before we close the public hearing and take the vote? All right. First up, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyra. Thank you. All those in favor closing the public hearing? That is unanimous. The public hearing is now closed. Would anybody like to entertain a motion to take up the recommendation of the principal assessor and the Board of Assessors?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take the recommendation of the tax shift as presented by the principal assessor.
Thank you, Mr. West. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. DePalma. Is there discussion? Mr. Manager, do, do we have that right?
Yes. We're taking up the proposal as presented by the Board of Assessors to, of the residential factor of .748433.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Okay. Karen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And happy Thanksgiving to you.
Thank you very much. Same to you.
All right. Moving right along, next up, on a much lighter note. We are pleased to welcome our Police Chief Joe Desmond, Sergeant Dan Furbush, and members of the Wilmington Police Department tonight regarding a very exciting annual tradition here in town, the 2024 Santa Parade. Gentlemen, good evening to you both.
Good evening.
Thank you. We're going to skip right over Thanksgiving. Give it to... All right. So unbelievably, this is the 10th time that we've come before you to look for your blessing for this event and obviously to get word to the public on dates and times and things like that. Once again, we will be collecting toys and food for the food pantry. Again, this has been 10 years. This has been a project of Dan's that has, you know, he's really put his heart and soul into it. There's a lot of volunteers, a lot of moving parts that go into it, and we think it's a great event for the community. So with that, I'll have Dan get into some details.
And I just want to be clear, Thanksgiving is late this year, so we're right on time. Thanksgiving's the one that's late, so... Yeah, so this is our 10th year. We've been shifting, moving things around. We've, we've run into some obstacles like COVID and stuff like that. We've always tried to adjust with the times, but this is our 10th year. We will be looking for, with your blessing, to have our parade be Sunday, December 8. We'll be kicking off from the police station or the Public Safety Building at 8:00 a.m. And we anticipate hopefully being done by 3:00. I know we have a new town manager. We typically go about 40, 50 miles throughout the whole day. We're out there for quite a while. We have volunteers from our local tow companies that usually contract with the town that will come out and help us out. Members of Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department. We collect food for the Wilmington Town Food Pantry. We collect toys for the Fire Department's program, the Toys for Wilmington Children. We also collect letters for troops, for the veterans and stuff that, at the end of the parade, we usually give out to loose amiglia. So everything we collect, you know, we don't... So everything we collect, you know, we don't require it, but the amount of people that donate throughout the year is just amazing. We even cut through a small pot of woburn, and we have a huge gathering over there that just keeps growing, and people just come out and they, they donate, and they donate, and it all goes to a good cause. So this year, we are going to incorporate again, we have one family that we will be stopping for. Couple of years ago, we started a, a program where we would try to select a family, the children with special needs, and we usually stop, and Santa and Mrs. Claus will come out, and all his friends will come out and provide a visit, we're going to do that again this year. There is still an open enrollment for that, so if anyone that happens to know a family that has a child that may be ill, or, you know, has some, some, either physical or whatever handicap that may not be able to come out, they can reach out to us. We have our own Facebook page, it's the Santa Parades, I believe it was Wilmington Santa Parade, go right on to the Facebook page, you can chat with us, you can also call me at the station, be happy to help everyone out. We will be doing a silent run again this year too, which is typically what we do, is we invite children of all ages who may have sensory issues that may not be able to enjoy the sirens and music and everything else. We have them, again, with your blessing, usually come down to the town hall, and we'll do a loop, but we'll have all the sirens turned off, we'll have all the music shut off, and they can still enjoy the parade, just with the loud music and, you know, because sometimes that kind of stuff can get overwhelming for some people. So our, our goal is to try to accommodate everybody. We do anticipate going, rain or shine, the only time that we may have some issues is if we end up with like five feet of snow, but hopefully that's not the case.
Lose all our GPS.
Yeah. It's happened before, and as of years in past, we're going to have what we call a Santa Tracker, which we have a GPS that is, goes through the Facebook page. We try to keep a constant update on the Facebook page where we are going. We will be posting the route shortly, obviously, we wanted to wait and make sure we had approval through you guys, but the Santa Tracker kind of allows like a real-time showing where the parade is, so that way people can kind of prepare, hopefully get out in time to come see us. So that is our, our goal for again this year, and we hope to see everyone out there as long as we have your approval, so.
Sergeant, Chief, thank you very much. Obviously, this is one of the best traditions that we have in town, it's hard to believe it's been 10 years now, this will be your first year. Eric doesn't know this, but it's tradition that the town manager runs alongside the Santa Parade all 50 miles. Say hello, it's a great opportunity to meet everyone, so.
Sure.
Look forward to that. But this is, this is wonderful, we're so excited to have you back and, and to offer our blessing tonight, as you said, and, and we're really excited about it. We're so grateful that we have a police department who goes above and beyond, and this is just yet another example of great community partnership, and it's, I say it time and time again, I'll continue to say it, that when you turn on the TV in other parts of the world, you don't, you don't see this relationship, such a positive relationship with police department, we're so lucky that we have such a great police department that's so compassionate and has a great relationship with its residents, so we're grateful for that. With that, anybody have a question or comment for the chief or the sergeant? Ms. Selli.
I just wanted to say thank you, this is one of my favorite memories from my youngest son, who's now 15, but going back, he was probably like, you know, six or so, but just watching, you know, you guys go by, and he was just, you know, in such awe, and it was just, it's just like a core memory for me, so, thank you for that. But this is just great, and now, you know, my kids may be older, I still watch out for it, but, you know, we have young kids in, in our neighborhood, so it's still such a joy to watch, and it's just such a great thing. And then the donation part is just wonderful as well, because, I mean, you guys aren't giving back already, and now you're going to give back even more, and it's just wonderful. And I agree with what the chair said, I mean, such a great relationship, you know, obviously with the, with the town, but with the residents, so we're very, very fortunate to have all of you, so thank you so much. I look forward to it.
Absolutely, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, just, I echo the comments of my two colleagues, I'm sure the, the other two will be saying something as well. It's always a, a great event for the community, and I want to two thank you for what you do, day in and day out, not just on December 8th, but every day. You know, what, what you provide to the community, the safety and security is so important, and the relationship, as Mr. Bendel had said, between the, the police department and its residents, and also the Fire Department as well, is so important. But this year is a special, special day for the community, and I want to thank you for continuing it. 10 years, it's just phenomenal, and can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Anyone else? Mr. West?
Again, I want to echo everyone's sentiments set on the board, you know, anytime it's, you know, where we can get community policing out there and, and interact with, with the families, and, you know, it's always a good thing, so, you know, on behalf of, you know, I think it's a great thing, and, you know, being involved with both police, fire, DPW, it's a good experience to, to get everyone out there involved, and it's nice that you're, you know, you're looking for, you know, you're looking out for like sensory youth and things like that, so, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Like my colleagues, thank you, Chief, thank you, Sergeant. This just goes to show you that kids will be growing up, learning that police are good, and Santa is there to tell them they're good. I want to congratulate you, it's a phenomenal experience. I know my grandchildren were always excited when you guys were coming around, and I just want to congratulate Chief yourself, Sergeant, and also all the men and women that volunteer. I know people give up their time, and again, it's just another way of saying, this is Wilmington, there's no other explanation you can do. Our hearts open up to everybody, so congratulations again.
And I, I don't mean to overstep, but I, I can't, I can't thank my volunteers enough, I mean, you guys see them on December 8th, but we have our meeting in October, and volunteers have been working on nights off, weekends, building stuff, painting stuff, you know, buying stuff, it's been, it, it's weeks and weeks and weeks of preparation that these, that these people do, and all without pay, and it's like, it's, for me as a person, it feels great to have all these people that help out. I can't thank the DPW enough, I can't thank the, the Fire Department enough, I can't thank the, the Chief and the rest of the police department, and some of them roll their eyes because it's Christmas, November 1st for me, but they, they tolerate me, and I, I, you know, the board has changed, you guys have always been behind us, and we really appreciate, you know, that we were able to bring this to the, to the community, so we just, I just wanted to thank, put it out there and thank everyone, because people did a lot of work and a lot of time into this, and I can't, I can't, being here saying thank you is not enough, so I just wanted to make sure that, and you guys, we really appreciate it.
Well, no problem at all. I think in, in a moment here, we'll take a, a formal vote to cement our support for you once again, but I, I think it's clear that our, our support will include wishes for good weather, for lots of daylight-
We hope.
And for light traffic on that day for you, and, and again, thank you to you both and for everybody involved. So with that, would anybody like to offer a motion-
Motion.
That we approve this? Thank you, Mr. DePalma. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Selli. Selli, thank you, is there discussion?
Have fun.
It's going to be a great day for everybody, thank you. Okay, all those in favor? It is unanimous, approved at the end. Thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Good night. If there's no objection, I'd like to take the next two out of order, courtesy of our invited guests, I think our next one is supposed to be a discussion amongst the board, but we do have two guests in the room, I'd like to invite them, if there's no objection, I would like to invite, invite our next guest, another great, strong tradition here, is to have Mrs. West here regarding the Toys for Tots program, and she has a guest with her, which we're grateful that he's here as well, I'll give you the opportunity to introduce them. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Welcome back, good, thank you.
Okay, I'll let you go first.
Okay. So, good evening, I want to start off by first introducing myself, who I am, because then that's going to lead into me talking about the Toys for Tots program itself, and then expressing my thanks. So, my name is Staff Sergeant Vella, I've got here in July, I'm the Assistant Toys for Tots Coordinator this year for Essex and Middlesex County. So, from April 2021 to this past July 2024, I was actually recruiting out of Lubbock, Texas. So during this time, I was thinking to myself, I'm making such an impact on people's lives, I'm doing something great, finding the next generation of Marines, and in my mind, that was me giving back and finding those young men and women that were, again, going to be that next generation. But in that, I learned a little bit about myself and that I love helping people. So I started thinking back, and whenever I introduce myself, I always tell my story, and a little bit of that goes like this. I'm born and raised in South Texas, if any of you all know the area, it's right by the border, so there's a lot of bad that goes on down there, right? And, you know, I grew up very poor, so in that time, you know, there was many a Christmas where I wasn't unwrapping presents, it was a tamale or something, right? But it was something. And, you know, it, it kind of hit me as I got older, again, going back to wanting to help these kids, and when I got here, they gave me the opportunity, they said, hey, Staff Sergeant V, do you want to be the Assistant Toys for Tots Coordinator? And as I've been going through this, it's kind of opened my eyes a lot more and made me realize that it wasn't about these high schoolers, it's also about these kids that I never really got the chance to talk to. So this program, to me, what it really means is, this is just that next step of being able to help out, you know, kids, young, young adults of all ages, from zero, one years old to 17, 18 years old. So this is very important to me. And what I've also learned about this program is, it was founded in 1947 by, gosh, I forget his name, Major Hendricks, in the Marine Corps Reserve. So in that time, I was doing my research, there's been about 700 million toys donated to the program, and last year alone, for these two counties, it was about 56,000 toys that were donated and giving out to families. And that's where I want to express my thanks and say thank you to all of you all, because honestly, this is a volunteer-based program, nobody has to do this, nobody has to go out of their way to give their time, their efforts, their donations, their money to this program, but you all choose to for a reason, so from me to you all, and on behalf of the United States Marine Corps, I do want to say thank you all so much for everything that you do to keep this program running and to give me something to do with all this free time that I got now.
Okay. My name is Karen West, and together with Frank West, Frank and I have been doing the Toys for Tots program now for 28 years, okay? In that time, we have learned that the program did start in 1947 with only 5,000 toys, to the amount of toys that he just told you, that they are raising, and 56,000 right in our communities, okay? Not a common thing known is that the train that you see for Toys for Tots was actually, the idea for that actually came up by Walt Disney, okay? So you figure you have a huge park that is dedicated to children, to the U.S. Marine Corps, who is dedicated to children, so all over the world, people are trying to help. And in our own community, we have toy collection boxes here now at the town hall and the senior center, as well as many other locations, we have them in both locations at Market Basket, we have them in both locations at the Redding Bank, McGovern Hyundai, Wilmington Dance Academy, Citizens Bank, The Dance Company, many, many places, Esposito Carpet. If anyone is going to be looking for a place to donate, Frank and I will be putting up on the, on Facebook, on the community pages and various other sites, exactly where all these donation places are. They're also in a lot of the businesses throughout town and throughout Tewksbury. We are in the process of trying to coordinate some events this year, and as we get them up, we'll put them on our marquee at West Real Estate, as well as on any local social media that we can, we can get on to. So with that said, it's great for everyone to come and donate toys to help out kids, but if you're in need of toys, please go to toysfor tots.org and follow the instructions and get yourself some help. That's what it's all about, it's not all about just collecting the toys, it's about getting them out to the families that actually need them, okay? We do have something to present to you.
So I'm going to do two things here, one, I'm going to read it, but then I'm going to, again, express my own thanks. So this is from the United States Marine Corps Reserve, this is the Commander's Award, "The U.S. Marine Corps Reserve is proud to recognize the town of Wilmington for outstanding support of the 2024 Marine Toys for Tots program. Your generous contributions have enabled the Marine Corps to bring the joy of Christmas and send a message of hope to America's less fortunate children." Again, my own personal thanks, as I mentioned, this program does mean a lot, and I'm grateful to be in the position that I'm in, because I was that kid and the one in need. So to be the person, to work with you all, and it looks like you have a very, very supportive community here, it, that does mean a lot, and I look forward to spending a lot more time with you all and getting to know you all better, so that we can continue this, you know, year after year, for the time I'm here, and hopefully I'm the assistant again next year. But sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Watch your step there, thank you very much. We have, as you look behind you, we have quite a few of these, we have so, we have so many, we've decided to build a new town hall, so. Thank you for that.
You should build one of those.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Thank you for that, and very kind of you for those kind words and for your presentation and your presence here tonight. We, Staff Sergeant, we're really grateful for you to be here and for your service to our country, and, and thank you for sharing your story with us, a very inspiring one, appreciate that. And, and to Mrs. West, obviously, I'll let you chime in here, but I want to extend our gratitude to you, and also Frank, my colleague, we're really grateful for all the years, I can't believe it's 28 years you've been doing this, it's very impressive, and we're so grateful that you, you do this every year and, and, and put so much pride and so much work into it, so we're really grateful for that.
It's something we hold to our heart, so.
There's no question. With that, is anybody comments or questions for my colleagues? Mr. Kyra?
Staff Sergeant Vella, thank you for your service, thank you for your presentation, it was very heartfelt, and, and want to thank the Marines for year in and year out, continuing to protect the country and to help the children of, of the United States and the world with, with your charitable endeavors. Karen, Frank, 28 years of dedicated service to, to this program is remarkable, I want to thank you for that. Question on deadline? Do you have a deadline for the-
We're planning on closing out the boxes on December 13th, okay? But if anyone has like large donations that they'd like, and sometimes people will, feel free, give us a call, if you can't get them to a location, we will be happy to come get them from you.
Thank you, thank you both very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra, Mr. DePalma.
Karen and Frank, let's start out with you two, 28 years, and when I speak, when I'm talking to Frank, the passion is still there so hard, that it's, it's a beautiful movement, and I congratulate you immensely, you're making some little person happy. Staff Sergeant, thank you for your service, Marines have always been involved with kids, and I commend you, and I commend by, from what I've heard tonight, the passion that you have for this program, so congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you both, thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff Sergeant, thank you for your service and all that you're doing for our country and, and for the children. It sounds like this is kind of like a full circle moment for you, and I think that's just a wonderful story, so I appreciate it. I know when I see the boxes show up at my work, I think, oh, Frank's been here. I missed him. But, no, I, I love it, and, and, you know, it's, it's just, you see the boxes everywhere, you see the signs everywhere, and it's such a simple donation, and I mean that in a positive way, it's an easy thing to do, especially- It's an easy thing to do, especially with the locations, you know, having at Market Basket. I mean, you could pick up something there to leave there, run to TJ Maxx, you know? And I know, I personally always think, you know, as we, you know, a lot of us do is, you know, as we're buying for our own children or family and friends, I personally do pause and think, you know what? If I'm fortunate enough to buy stuff for my family, I can buy something for a child in need. So, you know, I, I would make that, you know, sacrifice and give my kids, you know, a present less, if I could, you know, donate to a child in need, because, you know, I think we all have to look, we're all fortunate, you know, to be in that place, as, as you know, and I hope, you know, that people understand that and kids understand that, and thank you, both of you, all three of you, for everything you do.
Frank, I guess we'll let you chime in here. It's okay with Karen.
I guess so.
Okay.
Staff Sergeant Vella, first and foremost, thank you for your service. I appreciate your service, and I thank everybody in this room, you know, commend you for your service to our, to our country. I'm sorry, your name again is?
Francine.
Francine. No, but we, you know, like, like Karen said, we've been doing the program for 20, 28 years, but essentially, we put out empty boxes. I say this every year, we put out empty boxes and some, through some miracle, somehow the boxes get filled. So, I mean, it's, it's through the generosity of the community that fills the boxes, and it's also through the generosity of the community that also distributes the toys out to needy kids. So, it's, you know, on behalf of the Marines, you know, you make sure that needy kids get the boxes. One thing I will say is just that our main distribution, main pickup's going to end on the 13th, as Kevin, as, as you had asked Kevin, but we will keep a few scattered boxes, mainly the Market Baskets and a couple of other locations. We will keep those open probably until around the 20th or so because we do get people that all of a sudden will say, oh, I missed the 13th, what can I do? We'll make sure that they get to the Marines, so. But, you know, and, and thank you, sweetheart, also thank you for, for, you know, for, you know, partnering with me on this program. So, it's, it's, you know, it's a sacrifice to you too and the family and.
No, it's not.
Something that. No, but it's made our Christmases a lot, a lot nicer, and we've got stories that, you know, that we share from time to time on different families, and I won't labor that, but.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Definitely not a sacrifice.
You know, thank you to the Town Manager, obviously, for allowing a box here at Town Hall and, you know, prior, prior Town Managers that have passed many years, so. And thank you to my board members for the kind words to both my wife and I and, and also Staff Sergeant Vella, so. Thank you.
I would like to present each of you a coin, a Toys for Tots coin.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That's Frank's.
Thank you. Ooh, thank you. She'll want yours, yours back later on though.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you again, Staff Sergeant, for being here, and we're, we're really grateful for your service, and we hope that you will be back again, as you mentioned, next year and for many years to come. We welcome you here anytime that you want to join us, and we mean that. And to Karen, again, once again, thank you so much. Just a couple reminders, December 13th, you're cut off, and I don't think we mentioned it, but we have in the past. It doesn't have to be wrapped, correct?
It's not to be wrapped.
Not to be wrapped, right, okay. I think that's important to mention, so folks will, will know that. And so, thanks so much for, for making this a great tradition, 28 years for you all, and I hope for many, many more. So, thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving to both of you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you to all of you. Happy Thanksgiving and thanks to the community who helps us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Have a great night, thank you.
Thank you, Usual.
Very nice meeting you. Right, thanks for, let me take that out of order, and we'll just. It's tough to top those last two appointments. But we'll do our best. We'll, we'll conclude here, appointments with the discussion and an assignment of motions for the special. Tell me, I'll turn it to the manager, if you please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, there's a memorandum that you all had in your packet. As everyone's aware, there are five warrant articles on for our December 7th special time meeting. The, there's a, this is a draft of a proposed assignment of warrant articles, along with the initial vote to dispense with the reading of the warrant. So, I would, I would look for input and a vote to approve this if, if the board so chooses.
Okay, so you can see outlined here, Article 1, excuse me, myself will dispense with the reading of the warrant. Article number one will be read by Mr. Boland of the Planning Board. Article 2 will be read by Mr. Boland of the Planning Board. Again, Article 3 will be read by Mr. Boland of the Planning Board. Article 4 will be read by Mr. Kyra. Article 5 will be read by Mr. De Palma. Anybody have a question or concern there? Okay, so.
Chair, just, just quick. Will these be drawn randomly or will they be done in order?
As required by the, as required by the Charter, they will be drawn randomly.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if it was different for.
Good question.
Special Town, but thank you.
And also for those who are going to be responsible for reading, and I think all members of the board traditionally will get a small packet before the, the Town Meeting so that they'll know what to read.
Absolutely.
Great. Would anybody like to offer motion to approve the proposed assignments of the warrant articles for the upcoming December 7th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Palma, strongly seconded by Mr. Kyra. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, that is unanimous, thank you very much. Again, that's December 7th at 9:00 a.m. Okay, that concludes our appointments this evening. We'll move to communications. We have three. Mr. Manager, do you walk us through these, please?
Yes. The first communication in response to requests from the board regarding events at the municipal parking lot on Middlesex Ave, at the site of the new Town Hall. There was a concern expressed by Mr. Palma as to whether or not we should make permanent what was the temporary move of car washes and other events from that lot over to the public buildings lot. I did speak with Jamie McGoldy, just to make sure that he could opine as to whether or not he thought it was a necessary move or whether or not he was comfortable, because he, he's, he's the one who's going to be having to do the, the maintenance for that lot. He believes that, that he is comfortable with continuing to go forward at the new Town Hall lot, and he's more than willing to, to continue to monitor it, and, and if this does become an issue or anything arises, we can bring it back to the board for a potential change of policy.
Questions, comments? Okay. Thank you. Moving on, we have another letter.
Yes, this is a letter that came to the board and myself regarding price changes from Xfinity. So, you know, they are not small, unfortunately, and the, the information was relatively voluminous, but it's important for folks to know that if you, in fact, are an Xfinity customer, Xfinity is making changes both to the format of their bills and to the pricing of those different packages. There will, if you are receiving services or a package that are not available, you'll be getting a price change and a bill message with your bill, so please make sure you're reading those bills. I know if you're like me, sometimes you take them and you throw them in the trash, but there's some crucial information that's going to be coming in, in, in future bills that does impact your actual cost. And so, please, this is still let the board know, but more importantly, let the public know that those changes are coming, and if you have any concerns, please reach out to Xfinity and, and express your concerns about those price changes.
Thank you for the heads up. All right, I think that's it for communication. We have a couple of board to consider items.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board to consider number six, the board to consider executing a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wilmington and the International Association of Firefighters Local 1730. So, as the board is aware, we have been negotiating with the firefighters' union, and we believe we came to a resolution, and the union has approved that resolution. You're provided with a red line copy of the agreement, shows all the changes. This is identical to the changes which we've already discussed. There's no additions or subtractions in this article, and then we're obviously going to be voting on and signing a clean copy of the agreement. If the board would like, we can certainly go through, walk through the changes of the red line.
Or if anyone would like to offer a motion to execute the agreement?
I'll make a motion to execute.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, it is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board to consider number seven, the board to consider the request of John Romano, President Wilmington's Sons and Daughters of Italy, to use the municipal parking lot and 4th of July building for annual antique and collector's car show on Sunday, October 19th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second, I'll thank you. I also want to recognize that the President himself is here this evening. Good evening, Mr. Romano, thank you for being here.
And I apologize, I forgot, there was a rain date of Sunday, October 26th.
Mr. Romano, you've been waiting patiently. I want to extend you the opportunity, if you'd like to say something, you're welcome to, but you don't have to.
Just here in case there were any questions.
Thank you, appreciate your efforts and for being here this evening. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, it is unanimous, thank you very much. Hoping for good weather again.
Yes.
Happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Mr. Chair, a board to consider number eight, the board to consider appointing Jennifer Hunt as a member of the Council of the, for the Arts. And I just wanted to mention very quickly, as the, the board can see, there are a couple of different appointments to this council. This is actually very critical. A council on the arts acts as a funding pass-through for arts grants that we get from the state, so we do need to have a full council because they do need to take action to distribute those grants. And so, we've been, Bev has been beating the bushes, trying to find willing volunteers, and I, I will say, it's been a really kind of critical thing. The state brought to our, our awareness that these funds would let, we, we could miss out on some, some grant funds to, to local, local folks if we didn't have people to fill the, to staff these. So, that was the reason why these are here, and I think it's a really important thing for us to move forward on.
Okay, so the first one to consider is appointing Ms. Jennifer Hunt as a member of the Council for the Arts. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Mr. Kyra.
Yeah, in the cover letter that she presented is that she's interested in serving as chairperson. I, I don't think we have that authority. I think that it goes to the commission, but we certainly have the authority to appoint.
Right.
As long as she's aware of that.
We'll make sure that, that she's aware that, that comes down to the council to make the chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none on the appointment, all those in favor, it is unanimous, and thank you to Mrs. Hunt for your willingness to serve.
Yes, and next, board to consider, Mr. Chair, board to consider appointing Darren Bohm as a member of the Council of the Arts.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. West, is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote of the appointment. All those in favor, it is unanimous, thank you to Mr. Bohm for your willingness to serve.
And, Mr. Chair, number 10, board to consider request of Annie Murray to place a Hero's Christmas tree in Town Hall during the month of December 2024.
And so, this has actually been presented to us on a couple of occasions. We're grateful for Annie Murray to bringing this forward, and this is a wonderful, wonderful idea, and I think we'll be pleased to support it again, if I had to guess. So, would anybody like to make a motion to make it official?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, and Mr. Slagel, don't want to miss anything here. She provided us with a letter with a little description. Again, the gist of it, obviously, is that it will be here in Town Hall.
Yes, so, the, the Blue Star Mothers of New Hampshire are once again hosting Hero's Christmas trees around the state. What started as one tree in Laconia in 2006 is growing to trees all over New Hampshire and obviously into Massachusetts as well. Stars of gold, black, and blue adorn the trees bearing the names of United States service members past and present. Blank stars are also available for those who would like to add the name of someone currently serving or a past veteran to the tree. Blue Star Mothers sponsor local trees and decorate them for display in local businesses, town halls, and schools. Our troops have expressed their appreciation for the honor of being remembered in this way during the holiday season. So, this is, seems like a great.
And this also has the blessing of our Veterans Service Office as well. So, would anybody like to offer a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Oh, we already did that, that's right.
We tried to take that away.
We did, we did do that.
That'd be good, I apologize. Okay, so we have further discussion. I just want to thank Mrs. Murray, obviously, she is the mother of a, very proud mother of a military service member and a proud mother of a member of our Wilmington Fire Department, a brave member of the department as well, so, and a longtime resident, so we're grateful that she's taking this on. And before I screw it up any further, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, it is unanimous. Thank you so much to Annie Murray for that.
That ends our board to considers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next up is public comments. Anyone like to be heard? Sir, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Moselli, 25 North Street. So, next Saturday, we all know what's going on, special time meeting, hopefully it's not all day, but usually they can last a little, just a little long, but I wanted to just bring up something. I think Wilmington's in a pretty special spot right now because I've been, obviously, following the past couple months on the MBTA Communities Act. So, there are a couple towns that have said no, and their select board had a split vote on how they felt about it. So, Tewksbury voted no overwhelmingly, and their select board was three against, two for. North, North Reading overwhelmingly voted no. Their select board was three in favor, two against. Drakeet voted no as well narrowly. Their select board, three in favor, two against. Wilmington's select board is five and oh against, and I am as well. So, what I'm here to say is we have 13 days, 12 days, something like that, to get the word out, and I know a lot of you know a lot of people in town, and I'm encouraging you to help me get as many residents to the Town Meeting on next Saturday as we can because I believe Wilmington is worth fighting for, and I think you all can make a huge, tremendous impact. Just reach out to who you know, that's what I'm trying to do, and since we have a 5-0 board, all know, I think that's a very unique way, place to be right now relative to the other towns in the Commonwealth, so just want you all to use these days to your advantage and do as much as you can to get the word out because I would appreciate it, and I think the future of this town would as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, may I just add a comment?
Sure, please.
I just want to say that I know that Mr. Moselli just was able to get some lawn signs from, I believe North Reading was kind enough to give them to him, and they're just plain, they don't say North Reading on them. Just putting it out there, if anybody wanted a lawn sign that they could contact, Mr. Moselli, 41. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard? Sir, good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Slagel, can you tell us what the total amount of the warrants were tonight?
Mr. McDonald, thank you very much for the question, just as a friendly reminder, this is not a Q and A, but since we did mention the number earlier this evening, we can repeat it into the record, if you don't mind, Mr. Slagel.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Eight million, 719,565 dollars and 36 cents.
Thank you. Thank you very much. In Article 4 and Article 5, what was, do you know the amounts on those articles at Town Meeting? What, what they're going to be looking for? If you don't have, if you, if you don't have it, that's okay.
Sure, if you were so inclined.
I, I believe Article 4 is 4,100, I think it's 4,110 dollars, I believe. And Article 5 is 530,000 dollars.
Thank you.
So, the Article 5 is for a settlement for the Wildwood Street property that was taken by eminent domain, and I believe that property was taken for like about 400,000. by eminent domain, and I believe that property was taken for like about $400,000. And this is to avoid going to court and having a drawn-out litigation, if I'm not mistaken? Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct.
The reason why I wanted to point that out, because I noticed that in your executive session tonight, that you were looking at the Sharapa property. But in your language in the agenda, it doesn't say anything about eminent domain. It talks about purchase, exchange, lease, or value of the property. And, Mr. Slagel, are there any negotiations with the family to buy that on a friendly basis?
Sorry, Mr. McDonald, just once again, this is not a Q and A session. If you have some comments...
All right.
Certainly, what I will say to your question is, if you do have questions, you know, we've tried to answer a couple of them here already, but if you do have questions, you know, the town hall's open 8:30 to 4:30 every single day, and they do a great job of answering.
Well, I think the people of Wilmington deserve to know this answer. The reason why I...
Excuse me, sir, I will just interrupt you one more time. Those who care enough, reach out during 8:30 to 4:30 business hours, and they get great service when they do that.
The reason why I bring that up is because Article 5 is paying more than, like, more than double what we paid to take that property by eminent domain. And it's my feeling that the Sharapa property is worth $30 million. And if you take that property by eminent domain, I think you're going to find yourself in the same boat that we're in now, having to have a town meeting and having to have an article that avoids litigation to pay them what it's really worth. What I primarily came to talk to you folks tonight is the fact that, at least four times, Mr. Bendel, I've requested an agenda item, asked, requested you to put an agenda item on for senior housing, for a discussion. And at a previous meeting, I stated that it was my intention for the board to add an article on to the special town meeting for an alternative to the MBTA zoning, but obviously, none of you have put forth a motion to do that. So, all of yous are against the MBTA overlay district, but none of you have an alternative to present to the town to replace that. You're all against it, a 5-0 vote against it, but nobody has mentioned the fact that our planning board is actually for it, which I think is irresponsible. And I said it before, that when you overlay a MBTA district, which is market rate, over places that are already built, that have a 20% affordability built in because they are 40B, I think you run the risk of those properties raising the rents and people having to move out. We have a serious problem in town with senior housing, and I'll just reiterate what I said before, that I'm interested in putting forth an article and calling a special town meeting, which is going to cost the town money, which I was really trying to avoid, Mr. Bendel, which is why I wanted you and the board to put forth an article on this meeting to save the town money and to present an alternative to that MBTA overlay district. And I wanted to mention that I'm also against a $250 million elementary school that the folks in Wilmington want to build, that are on our committees. I feel as though this building is going to be freed up when the new town hall and the school administration gets built. We're using this building now, it's handicap accessible, and at one time was an elementary school. You go into the bathrooms, you see the facilities there, they're actually designed and built for little kids. And to have a building like the North Intermediate, which has had millions of dollars put into it with new windows and roof and parking, repaving, I think is like grossly irresponsible and disrespectful to the taxpayers of Wilmington. And, you know, I don't really see, hear any of you people really speaking out against that. The other thing I wanted to mention is, Mrs. Rashes was here tonight talking about taxes. And I look at other towns like Brookline, and I see them tremendously lower than Wilmington's dollar per thousand tax rate. And the value of houses in Wilmington have doubled, yet nothing's really been done to significantly bring down the tax rate. So, I think that's something that this board should consider. But I just wanted to point out to you, Mr. Bendel, and I just wanted to just ask you straight up, do you have any intention of putting forth an alternative to this MBTA overlay district?
Thank you for the question, Mr. McDonald. And yes, you are correct. You have emailed me on a number of occasions, all of which I've read and given great consideration. But I would tell you that one of the few liberties that you have, sitting in the chair that I'm currently in, is that you have the ability to set the agenda. And after reviewing your email request, I've set the agenda that I think is best fit for this board and this community.
And that would be a no, which is why I'm going to say this right now. When the board convenes to reorganize its board and to establish a chairman, you've put Mr. Bendel in the chairman position, and you've witnessed that Mr. Bendel has not done anything to put forth an alternative plan for this. And so, I just want to point out that this board has the liberty to reorganize itself at another meeting and actually remove Mr. Bendel from the chairman position and put somebody in there that's actually going to get something done, instead of giving people the typical response like, "I'm going to take it under advisement," which he never goes out to anybody and gets advice from. It's all in his mind, taking it under advisement, which is ridiculous. And I'm very disappointed in you, Mr. Bendel. And I think all the seniors in town are probably even more disappointed in you.
Well, thank you, Mr. McDonald. I am going to move on to see if anybody else would...
Yeah, of course you're going to move on.
But before I do that, I do want to wish you a very happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I wish you a happy Thanksgiving.
Would anyone else like to be heard this evening?
I hope you don't choke on your wishbone.
Unbelievable.
Anyone else like to be heard? Public comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to announcements. Anybody have any announcements this evening? I want to share a quick story, I know it's, we're getting later, but I was at a craft fair this weekend, and a woman approached me, and I recognized her, but it was one of those situations where you just can't, the name can't come to you. But she said to me, she goes, "I recognize you from the board." And I said, "Yes, that's me." And we introduced ourselves, and she said, "You approved our wedding recently."
Oh, November, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And she, and then it dawned on me that, you know, a couple months back, I think we had approved for the wedding. So, she went on to show me some nice photos of the wedding. It looked great, it was a sunny day, and the couple was very happy, but she said, "Please let the board know, we're very thankful, the wedding was a total success."
Oh, wonderful.
So, I told her I would pass that on to us.
Great.
It was really nice of her. She caught me off guard, I wasn't expecting that, but it was really nice of her to mention it.
And they had good weather that weekend, too.
They had great, great weather.
Yeah.
And so...
That's the kind of announcements we should have every...
Yeah.
Yes.
It was really nice of her to mention that, and she wanted, and so I told her I would extend her gratitude.
She could Photoshop our pictures in some way. She really wanted to.
But anyways, that was a happy ending to one of the votes that we had taken, so I'm happy for that couple. And I obviously want to take this opportunity to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving, and me, and to your families as well, to our staff, everybody who's here, happy Thanksgiving to all our residents. And I am grateful for, first of all, for the opportunity to be here, but I'm grateful as a resident that each of you volunteers your time. And I know firsthand that it's not the easiest job at times, and I know the pay is lousy, but you do it out of what you think is right for our community, so I'm grateful for you all, and I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
And my final announcement is that my beloved Shawshin Rams will be in the Super Bowl next week at Gillette Stadium, so I want to wish them well.
Wow, awesome.
And we'll be rooting for them. They'll be live on television and streaming online and on the radio, and I'll be there to root on the Rams, so good luck to the boys next week.
I have one quick announcement. I think you're a great chair, and I would vote you in again.
I appreciate that.
Just thought I'd mention that. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Likewise. Thanksgiving, everyone. Enjoy.
You mentioned that they made the Super Bowl. Super Bowl, they're going to be on TV. Want to give them the date and the time?
I'm sorry, yeah. So, the date is, yeah, next Friday, December 6th, Shawshin will take on Foxborough at 5:30 on December 6th.
Channel 38.
Channel 38, EEI Radio.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so it's really exciting time for the kids, so good luck to the Rams.
Yeah, let's go, let's go Rams.
And good luck to both of our teams on Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Shawshin and Wilmington. And I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving, happy and healthy. And so, thank you for that. New business? Anybody have any new items?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick, more, probably more of a comment than not. I know I had asked for potentially a board to consider item on the board, taking a board vote, if you will, on the MBTA overlay district. But I think Mr. Messelli had made a comment that the board is basically 5-0 against the MBTA, so I didn't know if any member had any comment on that. I'm certainly against it, and will vote as a resident against it on town meeting day, so I didn't know if any other member wanted to at least make a comment.
Yeah, just in response, thank you for the question. I mean, I think I made it pretty clear where I stand. I'm obviously in opposition as well. We have been since the beginning, going back maybe two years now. And so, I will most definitely be there and casting my vote in the, against it.
As will I. I am against it and will vote no.
The only quick comment I have is, I know we're going to do a random drawing, but now if Articles 2 and 3 come up before Article 1, I mean, Article 1 obviously is the player. So, can we do a random drawing that way, or...
That is a ruling of the moderator.
Yes. So, speaking of things to be grateful for, I'm grateful for our town moderator.
Yeah, right.
I have a feeling he's prepared for that.
We actually, so we, just to let folks know, we had an internal meeting with staff, we had, this did come up on the table. Jonathan and Mark Rich and I went around in circles about it multiple times. Jonathan is not convinced that the articles are linked such that they need to be done in order 1, 2, 3. And so, I will, I will continue for the next 12 days to try to convince him otherwise, but he is the moderator, and it is his meeting, and so, he's the ultimate determiner as to whether or not, you know, something...
I think that's reason enough to come out and see what happens.
Yeah, right.
Could be anything.
Interesting.
Could be anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Any other new business? Hearing none, we will move to important dates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. November 27th, brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Just a reminder, this week, Thanksgiving Day, November 28th, town offices will be closed, and November 29th, the day after Thanksgiving, town offices will also be closed. So, get down to town hall by 4:30 on Wednesday, if you have any business you need to do, preferably a little before 4:30. December 2nd through December 6th, we're going to have a curbside collection of yard waste. December 4th, we have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Then, December 7th, or sorry, December 6th, we have the Festival of Trees at Villanova Hall on Middlesex Ave from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. As was just mentioned, on December 7th, we have the special town meeting at Wilmington High School Auditorium at 9:00 a.m. Please arrive, we do need a quorum, so we want to see as many people as possible come on December 7th. December 7th, we also have the Festival of Trees continuing at Villanova Hall in Middlesex Ave from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And on December 7th, we have a Christmas tree lighting at the Town Common at 4:00 p.m. Hopefully, town meeting will be done in time for us to make the Christmas tree lighting at 4:00.
Oh, God.
On December 8th, we continue the Festival of Trees at Villanova Hall in Middlesex Ave from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Also, on December 8th, there is a Holiday Social at the Hardin Tavern from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And as was just voted, on December 8th, we have the Santa's Parade, starting at the Public Safety Building, but continuing for many, many miles, and please check online to see when it comes to your neck of the woods. December 9th, we have our regular select board meeting here in town hall at Room 9 at 7:00 p.m. And then, December 12th, here in town hall, we will have Santa's Workshop, here in Room 9, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And tonight, we'll conclude with our tradition of salute to service. Tonight, we salute Mr. Russell Gardner, who was born in Reading but has been a Wilmington resident ever since he left the service, when he joined the U.S. Navy in March of 1958, and was a radio operator in the U.S. Navy until December of 1962, and then entered the Navy Reserve until March of 1964, also as a radio operator and first engineer. He then, wasn't done yet, joined the National Guard and served until December of 1982. He transferred to retired reserve and left the service until on, in December 6th of 2000.